This is our regular meeting of the Dillen County Council, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, five P M. I'd like to start by people standing and saying the presence of religion.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag, to the United States of America, to the people who have fought for which saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on Councilman G. McLeod to say that.
That's by his most gracious and everlasting father. We thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, for everything that you're doing for us. We ask you to bless this council, or bless us all individually and collectively. Bless her decision we made, Lord Christ, that we did for the betterment of Dillen County. Honest to you, in your son Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
We've got to take on the agenda from presentation of flags. We've got some flags we want to honor some people with, and Steve's giving it in. It's Chris Miller, the family that just called back. Come forward.
Dillen County, in recognition of the dedicated service of Christopher Miller from January twenty-one through April twenty-two, to Dillen County and Dillen County Council District Two, and for the lasting impact he had on Dillen County, presented to the family of Christopher Miller on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, by the Dillen County Council.
I ask David to please do this flag presentation because him and Chris were best buddies. We talk about him all the time.
Yeah, not only was he a good councilman, he was my best friend.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. G. McLeod will come forward. I'd like to present this flag to G. Jerome McLeod. Here's a service, February twenty-eighteenth, December twenty-twenty-two, in sincere appreciation for your four years committed and dedicated service to Dillen County, Dillen County Council District Six, presented December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, by the Dillen County Council. G. is a good fellow, and we worked together, and I found out he was a good Christian man. We've got a good Christian man on council. That means a lot, which I hate to lose him. We're gonna miss you, G. Mr. Harold Moody, would you come forward? This flag is presented to Harold Moody, here's a service, January nineteen ninety-five to December twenty-twenty-two, in honoring with deep appreciation of your twenty-eight years of outstanding leadership, commitment, vision, and distinguished service to Dillen County, and the Dillen County Council District Five, presented December the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, by the Dillen County Council. Eight years ago, when I came on to council, Harold had twenty years' experience. He took me under his wing and guided me in the right direction, I hope, and he let me know about some grants and stuff that Towne Louden had, that we still had some money, but I got over a million dollars for the Towne Louden, okay? Harold Moody here for me. Thank you, Harold. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
I had a flag for thought, but Ray, who's not here, I'll present it to him later.
Did any of y'all got anything else you want to say? You got anything you want to say, G?
It was a good run. I've enjoyed it. Most rewarding part about it is being able to help people, and I'm gonna miss everyone. But I'm here. This is my home, Dillen County, and I thank y'all for allowing me to serve for the past five years.
Yeah, just a few words to say over twenty-eight years. The, we've come a long way. Foundation has been laid to change our county's trajectory, and it is changing. And it's up to the people and the council to keep it going. When I first came on, Dixie Anna Mills and our textile industries had just closed, and we were in trouble. Then they eliminated the tobacco program, and that was a blow to Dillen County. So we started looking around, and we said we needed to build an industrial park. So the county council, working with the city of Dillen, established the industrial park out here in thirty-four, and this, of course, replaced soybeans, tobacco, and cotton fields. Now, in Dillen County, we're making jet aircraft parts. We have the largest distributorship, I think, on I- ninety-five with harbor freight and tolls. We have Bitcoin mining operations going on out here now. So I think the county is moving in a very positive direction. It's just up to the citizens and the politicians to keep moving the county forward. Thank you.
Number five, public hearing, recreation agreement. A public hearing in regards to an ordinance by Dillen County Council authorizing and ratifying a lease agreement binding between Dillen County and the city of Dillen leasing recreational property owned by Dillen County to the city of Dillen for recreational purposes. Number six, public hearing, land sale. A public hearing in regards to an ordinance by Dillen County Council authorizing the sale and command of approximately two acres of land owned by Dillen County as deprecated in Exhibit A and ratifying and authorizing a contract of sales and related documents authorizing execution of the essential contract of sales and related documents and performance of acts that set forth in the contract of sale and related documents and other matters provided herein.
Mr. Chairman, why don't you ask if anybody wants to speak on either one of these for the record?
Number seven.
Ask if anybody wants to speak.
If you look, anybody signed the...
Which often just need to ask if anybody here wants to speak.
Anybody won't say anything about sales? We have number seven, our approval of agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
What motion?
We have a motion, a second.
I see.
In discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. I made approval of amendments November nine, twenty twenty-two, November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and December the fifth, twenty twenty-two. We have a motion to approve the amendment.
I'm not sure if we approve.
We have a motion, a second.
Not second.
End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Number nine, recreational play.
Dillen Marion, Dillen, Marion, Marion, Dillen County Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, they're asking for a donation for their residence for Christmas.
We've been having a blast. They haven't been coming.
They have the recreation.
They come to recreation. I think the county donated quite a lot.
Last year, last year, play took care of it. I think we gave them a donation of a thousand dollars last year.
I'm not sure whether it's appropriate in budget or not. My suspicion is not, I think we give them...
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't...
I don't think it's appropriate in the budget.
Okay. We don't have anything in the budget.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't think we have the kind of money that they need in our recreation account. We'll just have to look into that and bring it up. I think my father has a special meeting to connect with this, so we'll bring it up.
Okay, Lakeview Recreation Department, for the Lakeview nine-to-ten All-Star Football Team, they'll be playing in a state tournament on December tenth, and they're asking for their support donation, and this comes from Kenny Baffey and Dennis Townsend. Dennis Townsend is gonna give five hundred dollars.
Mr. Drew, on that board of disabilities, let me go ahead, let me get him something until we get things straight. Can I give him a, give him two hundred dollars donation?
Okay, and for the Dillen Miss, which is for Harold Moody, he's gonna get three hundred fifty dollars. And for five station number four, he's gonna, Harold Moody's gonna get three hundred fifty dollars. And for the Dillen County Boys and Girls Youth Center, they're asking for a donation to support their, their annual youth empowerment conference, which is gonna be held on Sunday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and they're asking for donations.
Two hundred.
What is saying, Mr. Drew?
I give a hundred, Drew.
Do we have a motion to approve the recreational play?
I made that motion.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Number ten, donation of EMS vehicle to Dillen Rescue.
Got Daniel Moody here, the EMS and emergency services director. I think Dillen Rescue is requesting one of the old EMS ambulances.
They are. It's a twenty thirteen model. It's about a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. Their spare truck's been out of service for three or four years at least, and they need a spare, so I feel like that's one way we could help them. It's an older truck that I feel like it'll be reliable.
What they gonna do is they gonna...
They're not gonna use it as ambulance. They're just gonna use it as a, as a rescue truck. They'll put tools and stuff on it. They're just not gonna transport any patients.
They're not transporting...
No, they're just not fit to transport patients. They're basically just wanting a chassis.
If they're on rescue, what would be all the foreign, say, I don't know. We have a motion, get your hand, that's the Dillen Rescue one.
I made that motion.
We have a motion, a second. End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. And then my eleven, mutual aid agreement for emergency services.
It's the statewide mutual aid agreement. Every county signed, and all the municipalities signed it. The city of Dillen already has it on file, but to get certain grants through the State Firefighters Association, you have to have that on file. And the only two departments right now, there are county departments who aren't in file, so it's just gonna be a blanket-wide policy for the entire county.
Is it statewide or just a certain, a mechanic?
It's the statewide mutual aid agreement, but each county municipality needs to sign.
What does it come for us to do?
Provide assistance if needed.
We have a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement.
A blatant motion.
We have a motion, a second.
I see.
End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Number eleven, ordinance reading, third reading, number twenty-two, day ten, an ordinance by Dillen County Council authorizing and ratifying a lease agreement binding between Dillen County and the city of Dillen leasing recreational property owned by Dillen County to the city of Dillen for recreational purposes. It requires a motion. We have a motion.
I made a motion.
We have a motion, a second.
I see.
End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, we'll be, third reading, number twenty-two, day seven, an ordinance by Dillen County Council authorizing the sale and command of approximately two acres of land over Dillen County as deprecated in Exhibit A and ratifying and authorizing a contract of sale and related documents authorizing execution of the contract of sale and related documents and performance of acts that set forth in the contract of sales and related documents and other matters provided herein. This requires a motion. We have a motion.
I made a motion.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
End of discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Number thirteen, Spectrum Charter Communications, Joe Prater.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome, number thirteen. My name's Joe Prater. I'm the charter communications, probably knows by our brand name, Spectrum. And I came today to give an update on where we are with our broadband project. I'm gonna kind of talk you through our build process and where we are today. I'm sure you're seeing a lot of our trucks lately riding around, and we're gonna get some good activations going this week, and I'll talk about it. And then at the end, you have to answer any questions, so it's likely maybe you could help me move to the next. Thank you, ma'am. So this is the map of all, all of the project we're doing across Dillen County. Now, the gray area you kind of see in the middle, it's kind of hard to see in between the pink, but that's where our current network is. The blue areas are what we received federal funding for from the FCC to build out, and then the yellow dots are the three hundred and forty-six addresses that we entered into our agreement with Dillen County to build out as well. So when you take into account all the blue, which is about a little over, a little under twenty-seven hundred ARDOF locations across the county, and then the three hundred and forty-six we partner directly with Dillen County, it's a little bit over three thousand that we're connecting across the whole, the whole county. So between the blue, which is what we're building, the gray is where we are, the yellow is where we're building, the pink areas are areas that are already served by another provider that's not charter spectrum, so those areas are considered served. So when we complete this project, which I'll talk about a little bit more detail here in a little bit, that will be probably anywhere between ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the county connected with, with high-speed broadband. So we got a lot going on here, and if I can move to the next, I'm gonna kind of talk through, these are the phases of our project, and if we go to the next one. The first one is walkout, if we could go to the next slide. We physically walk out every foot of our entire project, so early on in the project, you probably saw some of our trucks out and about, probably folks with some measuring poles that are getting out. They, they walk every foot to see exactly where we're gonna attach the poles, where we need to go underground. They collect all these data points throughout the whole. You probably see people walking down easements as well, trying to go ahead and get ahead of where we want to do our infrastructure. This is probably one of the most time-consuming parts, because it just takes so much time to walk out the entire area. Move to the next. So the next is, next is design, and we can go ahead and click forward there, too. Once we collect all of that data from the physical walkout, we have to put it into a design software that actually designs the entire infrastructure. So you'll see there all these measurements from the poles, the placements of the pedestals, our OLTs, where all the actual network goes is put onto a Google map like this before we start building it. Again, a very time-consuming, tedious process where someone has to sit on a desktop and actually design all of this. Then we go to the permitting phase, and we'll click one more time. So once we actually determine the poles we need to connect to, that's when we have to assess whether there's certain clearances or not. You know, we have agreements with all the different pole owners, and we have to obey the clearances for which we have to attach to, so sometimes it will require that we switch out, switch out that pole, because we connect to the bottom. We have to leave that certain clearance, you know, whether it's for agriculture, equipment, or just other reasons in that pole agreement, but that's when we really determine on when we start to which poles we got to attach to, and we have to apply with that pole owner in order to get their permission to attach to it. I will say, going aerial this way is the fastest way to deploy, so you'll see probably a lot more trucks throughout the county that have the bucket trucks that are attaching, or you may see areas where we're trenching and going underground, so. And then the make-ready, that's, make-ready is what switching out a pole is. We are making that pole ready to hold our facilities, so whether that's actually just attaching to an existing pole, or having to pay to switch it out with a brand-new pole, that's again, a very time-consuming process for getting it ready as well. Okay? And then the last, and we can click one more, that's a, that's a pole being switched out, just for a picture. And then the last phase, which is construction and activation, we can click to that next one. This is where you're either gonna be, like I said, seeing our folks attaching to the poles, or we'll be putting conduit underground where we'll put our fiber. Usually, it's typically when there's no pole space available, and we have to go underground, so you'll see a lot of our equipment doing that as well. And then we'll click one more time. This is another snapshot of the project, and then if I could go to that last slide, this is what is the most important part, which is an update on where we are. So the walkout that I talked about, we have completed that one hundred percent across the county, both for our ARDOF areas and for those county ARPA addresses that we're building, too. With the design, all of the ARDOF has been designed, we're about three-quarters done with those county ARPA addresses. Same with permitting, we've submitted for eighty-five percent of our permits across the entire county, most of which we've already gotten back. And for the make-ready, three-quarters of the entire project, the make-ready has been done, which means we've switched out poles, we've gotten approval to go underground, and we've actually started the construction. So you've been seeing all the trucks flying around, either attaching to poles, going underground. We are now in the activation phase, actually starting this week. We're hoping to get our first four hundred locations activated by the end of this week, and then at the mad dash here towards the end of the year, we're looking to get about twenty-two hundred more locations lit up by January, and then finishing up on the tail end with seven hundred and twenty-five by quarter two, and then the last remaining, three hundred and fifty by quarter three. So the map that I showed that had all of the build that we're doing, we are on track to finish that by the end of the third quarter of next year, which is pretty good timing. Now, like everything, there are supply chain issues, there are labor issues, but we are pulling in resources from all bordering states to work on everything we have going on in Dillen and in the region, so it's a very busy time for us, but we've set that aggressive goal, and as of today, we're still on track, so. Any questions? I can answer.
Mr. Prater, I certainly support the truck. I'm not opposed to it at all, but the terms of your permits, they require it all to be placed at the back of the right-of-way.
Yes, well, in the right-of-way, yes, sir.
In the right-of-way. Is there a determining factor of where in the right-of-way?
We typically follow wherever DOT allows us in that right-of-way.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I had a complaint, and it was a pretty serious complaint of most right-of-ways not utilized by the DOT. If it's a thirty-three-foot right-of-way and the ditch is on the twenty-foot line, you've got ten foot behind the ditch, and farmers are utilizing that now.
Right.
And when you go and plow up several rows of cotton, and it's not quite harvest time, they, I won't say they questioned the scheduling, they questioned the need of it going so far back in the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
And I know it's a priority to try to get it as far away from the road as you can. I certainly understand that, but in timber areas or wooded areas, I notice they don't go to the right-of-way. They just go to the back of the ditch. So I wonder if it's a matter of cost, if it costs more to do that, because I know you don't want to go through a wooded area and cut somebody's timber.
Right.
Because it's all easement, and I realize they own it, and they own what's there until it's needed.
Yes, sir.
But the complaints go, are consistent with tearing up the crops when they get to the back of the right-of-way. How far along are you in that process, and can it be changed to go to the back of the ditch?
I can't really speak to that, because it's kind of a construction question, but I can take it on case by case. If there are particular addresses, folks you want me to work directly with, if we are tearing that up, I'll be happy to help in any way I can. But as far as the permitting, we have received back seventy-five percent, so I...
Your numbers were eighty-five percent of the permits have been received back, and I understand.
Right.
And I understand there's areas where it's poles, when I just, where you, where you're placing your conduit, and it's already there. Sometimes when they haven't gathered crops yet, it makes a difference.
Yes, sir. Well, and I'll be happy to work with, with you directly and for the farmers. That's the last thing we want to do, is tear people's crops, and I know it happens.
That's the last thing they want you to do, too.
I know it happens, and so...
It happened on my farm.
It happened all, it's happened all year. You know what I mean? They've grown all year, and now it's gone, and now it's in the back of the right-of-way. If you could leave contact information instead of, I could shoot it to them.
If I...
I appreciate that.
Send it around.
I understand we're not gonna solve that sitting here tonight, but I would like to.
Yes, sir.
We afford to bring you contacts.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
The areas that you said that were in, I think it was P., that are already being serviced, who is the provider?
I'm not sure. I can look it up and get back to you. That's all based on the FCC's federal data. That means some provider, whoever they are, are claiming with, with the FCC that they provide that service there, but I can go in and look at that record and see who that provider is. I don't know top of my, top of the...
Because I know if it's like Hughes-Ned, the community were, you know, preferred spectrum over Hughes-Ned, because you don't get a lot of that with that.
Yeah.
Another question, when you say, like, in certain areas, I'm getting phone calls that you guys are in a neighborhood, and then you may stop at one house, and there may be fifteen to twenty other houses there, and you guys are saying, they're being told that that was it for their area. So how are you determining that when you're in the neighborhood, we're gonna do the first fifty, but we're not gonna go any farther, and there may be fifteen, twenty more houses?
It could be a capacity issue. Whatever infrastructure they built can only take on so many homes, but there are ways we can extend, and if there are particular streets where that happens, please let me know, and I'll get directly with construction, figure out what we can do to keep, keep going down streets. I know this is an issue across the map, so I'm happy to help fill in those gaps anywhere I can.
Okay.
One last question. You said there was five percent of the area that you were not gonna be serving. That scattered all over the county, or is that the stream edges of the county, or is that concentrated in one area?
That's just a ballpark, because there are some areas, like on that map, there was a red area, which was an area that was awarded to SpaceX, which is a satellite, which FCC has since denied giving them funding, so they're not really accounted for, but we can find a way, whether it's through county or through the state, we can try to find a way to build to those areas, too. And then, of course, there's gonna be those donut holes as well, which would, you know, at the end of the day, it's working directly with you guys, knowing exactly where those gaps are that we otherwise may not know. So after, after we get everything built, then we gotta really get down to the details and find those, those gaps and those holes.
But you can come back.
Yes, sir.
If necessary.
Yes, sir, and we will. Yes, sir.
They put the cable across the road from my house. How would I proceed to get them to coreboard my highway and get over to my side of the road? What do I need to do?
So they should be able to serve both sides of the road. There's no reason they shouldn't. Are you, are you calling in, and they're saying service isn't available?
Oh, no, I'm not calling anybody. I didn't know how to proceed at all. I just came by my house and put the box out, and I was on the highway, and I asked the guy that coreboard the main road there, how, what, when they were gonna bore it to my side, and he said, we don't know. So I didn't get...
Yeah, well, you would, just whenever you call in to subscribe, they would send a technician out there that would then bore under the street to get it directly to your home?
So we called the local spectrum, picked it here.
Well, it's the, our typical one-eight-hundred number, that they'll then dispatch somebody lightly from maybe our Columbia office that would come and do that construction, but you know, we, we will bore straight onto the road to your house. So it doesn't matter what side of the street it's on, we'll, we'll find a way to get, get to the home.
Where they put that box makes absolutely no sense. They didn't put it across from my house. They put it about fifty yards down the road, and I don't know how they're gonna get to my house. They're gonna have to go to coreboard the highway, and then coreboard their road to get to my house. But I'm in the territory, I've seen that.
Are there poles near you? Like, how does power run to your house? Is it aerial or... We typically follow whatever...
I have underground service.
Okay, because we typically follow wherever your power route is, so if it's underground, we would go underground there, too.
Okay, so just call in, and that solves this problem.
Yes, sir, and if they tell you differently, you let me know.
Okay, thank you.
But that's the, that design process I was talking about. I have no idea how they choose where those pedestals go, but that's, that's the process where they look at it, and then it's all based on capacity and length of infrastructure where they choose where each of those go, including where in the right-of-way. Again, I'm not sure why they would go so far back, as you mentioned earlier, but, but I'll be happy to, you know, help in any way I can with any of these issues.
Any more questions, Joe? We'd appreciate you coming and give us this, give us a good presentation and answer a lot of questions and stuff we need in there, but thank y'all.
Yes, sir, and I'll make sure my contact information gets sent out to everybody. Thank you, sir.
Number fourteen, ordinance number twenty-two, day eleven, first reading, by Todd Longin, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee-in lieu of tax agreements by and... by and between Dillon County and South Carolina, and the company in ownership at this time is project convertible, convertible, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. This requires a motion, do we have a motion?
So we have to have two motions on it, one for the, read only for the ordinance, and then the other one for the resolution. And I can talk about any of the details of that resolution if you'd like, because now a good time to talk about it. So basically, it's a fee-in-lie option, it is the 6% from the 10 and a half, which is now state mandated. The county doesn't have an option for that for the industry, that was passed last year. In addition, that's a 20-year agreement and a fixed, um, fixed rate, fixed millerate, and no SSRC. So this is, I mean, this is the option for you. This is, this is pretty much your basic fee-in-lie option, like I said, that 6% is now-
After you vote Tyler Longley, can you kind of let everybody know sometime at the next meeting exactly where it is and everything?
Sure, sure.
You're talking about the inducement resolution, what it does?
With the percentages of?
Just what purpose of it is?
I'll tell them. Sure, so this industry, you're talking about the industry itself?
Well, you know, the inducement resolution, why they need it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me, the inducement resolution is independent for this reason. The inducement resolution is part and parcel of the ordinance entitled Longley. And what it does is, it allows the industry to capture investment they're making this year in their fee agreement. And so it's routine, so if they pass it by January 1, the inducement resolution, then the investment they're making, and I understand from the administrator, they are making investment, right?
Correct, absolutely, yes, sir.
Then they can capture that in the fee agreement as far as taxing, deducting it from their taxes and all that kind of stuff. So that's why they have the inducement resolution, and it, as the administrator said, delineates that it's going to be 6%, 20 years, fixed, and it also, um, right, the SSRC. And it basically says that you are agreeing to, um, pass the fee-in-lie tax agreement. But the fee-in-lie tax agreement takes three readings now. So you have to pass it independently, it's an independent document. But this inducement resolution is independent, but it allows them again to capture their investment this year. Or use it, is another way of saying it.
Yes, sir.
So are we allowed to get more information than just its entity?
Sure, yes, sir. And as far as the name of the, I mean, not necessarily the name, you mean like jobs created and stuff like that, or?
Not necessarily the name, but we'd like to know a little bit more about it, just to say we're giving somebody something.
Sure, sure, as far as the breakdown on tax credits, or the, so the investment is $24 million, is what theirs is.
When we give this fee-in-lie, we got, know how many people are standing on the floor and-
That's right, yes, sir, and it's, it's inside of that resolution, 40 jobs, $24 million investment. And it's all inside of that, that inducement resolution that y'all have. Is there any other questions you have, any, any particulars?
Just one, sometime we need to go into executive session, if you explain everybody what it is and what's going on.
It's harder, it's harder to-
Sure, sure.
Really support somebody on what it is.
Absolutely.
Might be voting to cut my pay or something.
So should, should we go, at any point, the disclaimer, we can go into executive session if you'd like.
Come right now.
We can go now if you'd like.
Do we have one planned for later?
We do.
It's about time, it's about time, only, I, I, I don't think it's going to, right now, but you wanted to let us know that it is.
If-
You got to do it two more times.
It really is pretty straightforward, no, no catches, no-
I mean, I make a motion.
We got, we got a motion, and like I say, this is just the first reading, we got two more readings, and we're going down to the second reading, every councilman has a better idea of what it is. All the details. We got a motion, they're second.
I said it.
They're second, any more discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Inducement, all opposed.
Okay, so in addition, Admiral Buzzzy, we also need to have a motion on the inducement resolution.
Which has the figures in it.
Yes, sir.
We got a motion, is second.
I second that one, but-
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what is the inducement resolution, is just a first vote on that, or there's three votes on that?
There's three on that, sir.
There's three on that as well.
There's one.
There's one. Does it bind us to anything?
Got to do the ordinance.
We've got to do the ordinance before it weighs anything else into effect?
Before it's binding, got to do the ordinance.
Okay, but this needs to come now?
By December 31.
For the benefit of the industry.
Yeah, by December 31, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion.
We got a motion, they're second.
We'd say.
They're second, any more discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Administrator before the waste water study.
So, um, the wastewater study was something that was done a while back, this is top, this is typically an economic development project also. Basically, it is some of the challenges we're running into for Dillon County. We are relying on the city's water, state wastewater capacity to be able to draw the industry. And right now, the city is around 85% to 87% of allocation. They recognize this, they've been trying to go after grants. The county helped pay for a water study to be done through the cog, if I remember right, through a grant. That water study, y'all have a copy of it, it lays out a nine-step plan on how to grow that, in addition to growing our industry. If we want to grow our industry in Dillon County, we have to grow that. As I've taught with some of you, it's going to require some extensive funding, so we are actively looking for funding in Washington and state level to see if we can come up with something, even small steps to help grow that capacity. But that's just a study that was provided to give you all the information on tie-ins, um, different pump stations, but a long-term plan of how to get Dillon County on track to be able to really attract some big industry. Since I've been in my position, there have probably been 15 or so projects that we did not even qualify for because it didn't meet the minimum for the wastewater capacity. So it is really hindering us at the county level with, with attracting ministry.
City Dillon's been talking about it for a while.
They have. Just want to make sure y'all have that, I've got some questions on the floor, and it's there and available for y'all to read on it.
This is for information.
Yes, sir.
Okay, administrator briefing, administrator report, we got a traffic study.
And that is the same type of report, it was done by cog, I think we received it last year, or not, this year, last fiscal year. It's basically a study of the port and the traffic around it. In addition to that, it'll tell you the impacts of the area and how to help grow it as well. That's a, a big need for us as far as looking at future development around that port. But it's a study as well, just wanted to make sure y'all had that, I've been asked about it as well.
Information only, also?
It is, yes, sir. I said I had a couple of council members ask about it, and want to make sure everyone had it.
If I got any questions I want to ask, administrator about the traffic study. It's pretty well accepted, I read the thing. Well, number 16, now administrator briefing, transfer of papers.
Um, Mr. Buzzzy, if I could, could I, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could I recommend that we go into executive session to discuss legal and contractual matters pertaining to item 16AB and 17A and B also?
I make a motion, we're going to executive session.
I make a motion, we're going to executive session, is that second?
I said it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're going to executive session, but no action to be taken. We do anything, we come out, so we can come back in. This one, we went on in the executive session, if we want to go on, thank you.